If we're ready, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll stand for a moment of silence and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, the roll call, please.
Denise Girardi.
Here.
Michael Cox.
Here.
Peter Hansel.
Here.
Roberto Sides.
He's on the way.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. Approval publication.
The items were advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on November 8, 2019.
All right, and we don't have any minutes to approve, so I can get into the explanation of the meeting, but anybody who plans to come up and give testimony today, if you would stand and raise your right hand, be sworn.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as a tribute to help your God?
Okay, thank you. All right, so welcome. We're the Planning Commission. We are appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet two times a month. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the Board of County Commissioners recommendations on council comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezoning, and conditional use requests. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance exceptions, and requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. Anyone who's in opposition to any comprehensive plan amendment or development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it's important for you to attend the following Board of County Commissioner meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with our format, we have three different segments at times. We don't always have all three. We have continuances, and that's where the staff or the applicant has asked for the application to be continued to a different date. It's been our tradition to approve those requests unless there are extenuating circumstances. We have consent, which we have several of those today, and we'll go through those items one by one, and as we read them off, if there's something on there you'd like to have discussed, raise your hand, we'll pull it off consent, and we'll put it on the regular agenda items, and that's the third item of the regular agenda items. The applicants will have three minutes to make a presentation, and the questioners or other people in the audience will have three minutes to ask questions, respond, and then the applicant will have a time to come back up and respond to those questions. I don't think I've had any requests for additional time, Denise.
No.
No, okay. So this is a good time, if you've got a phone, to put it on the silent mode. And I think I did mine. Double check. So before we start the meeting, is there anyone here to speak on something that's other than what's on the agenda? Okay, see no one. So Denise, I think we can start.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commission members. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. We're going to skip over to item PC 3 because it's a continuance item, and I'll read the continuance item into record. Item PC 3 is PDD 20-0113. It's for a mining operation and conditional use amendment request for coastal landfill of Florida for a mining operation permit and conditional use permit amendment for an existing mine and construction and demolition debris disposal facility. Staff is asking for a continuance to December 12, 2019, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City on this item.
All right, we have a request for a continuance. Is the applicant present? All right, is anyone here to object? I see no objections. Is that your motion?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Your motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Following item, item PC 1 is PDD 20-0111 for Bell Lake MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District. This item, there are some folks here in the audience who would like to speak to this item, so we're asking that this be pulled from consent at this time.
Okay. So note that we're going to pull PC 1 off consent.
Well, I'll do that as Patrick is presenting it to you. I'll be doing the agenda memo for you. I'll walk upstairs and grab that for you. Following item PC 2 is PDD 20-7443 in the name of 54 Crossings MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, Colwell Avenue Properties 4. It's a rezoning request from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow 152,895 square feet of professional office on approximately 2.16 acres. This comes here with recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet, and this is just basically reviving a portion of the old Concord Station Master Plan Unit Development District and not adding any additional entitlements to that approval.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? I don't see any objections.
Denise, I got a couple of questions on this. Should we pull it, or, I mean, I don't know, I mean, this one's already an MPUD, and it's just revising some of the entitlements.
It's an expired MPUD. Yeah, that portion of the MPUD is expired, so we're reviving it.
In general, my question is about cross-access, cross-access to the west. I don't, maybe I'm missing it, but I don't see any reference on the MPUD as far as requiring cross-access to Ballantyne for access. They have a requirement to do the turn lane at the Ballantyne 54 entrance if it's not already done, but there's nothing on the MPUD requiring an access from the road that comes out of Ballantyne, that April Drive. Should that be indicated?
I'm having Tammy come up to speak on that item. I believe that that's something that's required in our land development code anyway, but I'll have her speak to that item.
Tammy Statter, Planning and Development. April Drive actually comes off of State Road 54 through this subject property, so they already have cross-access. There's an easement for the Ballantyne shops to be able to use April Drive.
It just doesn't show up on the drawing, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Well, it signalizes intersections at Ballantyne Drive, right? So somebody coming to this parcel will come from Ballantyne Drive, Ballantyne down April? There's no median opening at this property, is there?
They could, they could get there from there, but April makes a turn south through this property. April connects to State Road 54.
So I guess to answer the question directly, can this project get on April Drive to the light?
Yes.
Is that their primary access, or no?
State Road 54.
Okay, but there will be a connection at April Drive, is what you're telling me.
Correct. April comes off of State Road 54 directly through this property.
So I guess, I think I know what Mr. Girardi's concerned is, they're showing an access arrow. The MPUD plan's showing an access arrow off 54. It's not showing an, and it shows a pedestrian access arrow at Airshire Boulevard, but it doesn't show any access arrow at April Drive.
Because as April exists, it's, the access is already there.
Well, 54 exists too, so you can't say that it's just because April exists.
I think the code probably takes care of it. I think they're probably required to do it, but typically we see the MPUDs, and they usually indicate access points.
So if that's a concern, you could make a motion for approval conditioned on them adding an access arrow at April Drive. Is the applicant, where is the, who's the applicant? How are you representing the applicant? Are you all intending to access April Drive?
Yes, there is an access to.
Could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Ali Attefi, Lingston Associates, 5023 West Laurel Drive in Tampa, Florida.
So does the applicant have?
I haven't been sworn, by the way. I didn't get up.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as a tribute to help your God?
I swear.
Does the applicant have any objection to modifying the MPUD plan to show an access arrow at April Drive?
No, we don't have any objection.
You're going to have to have your name.
It's just that the arrow was omitted from the plan. Excuse me, this is Katie Cole.
Yeah.
With Hillwood Henderson, 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800.
You've been sworn?
I have been sworn.
Thank you.
The arrow was omitted from the plan and can be added before first reading.
Okay, so make that a condition.
That's my question.
Yeah, that was it. That was all.
That's all?
Thank you.
Okay, so I want to make that a condition of the motion.
If you want to make a motion for approval with the condition that they had an access arrow for April Drive on the MPUD plan.
Who made that motion, Mike, you, or?
Well, I can't make the motion.
No, I mean.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Okay, I don't think Mr. Girardi just made that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Very good. Can't hear anything by you.
Sorry.
Okay, so we're racked the PC 1.
Yes, hi. Yes, I got it. Patrick Dutter, Planning and Development Department. Good afternoon, everybody. Yes, so this is item PC 1, Bell Lake MPUD, PDD 20-7448. This is the location map. Okay, great. So it's at the intersection of Bell Lake Road and Alpine Road. It's roughly one mile east of Land O' Lakes Boulevard. Land O' Lakes Boulevard is out this way. This is the current zoning surrounding the property. You'll see it's some lower density residential to the north, but you have a PUD to the south, and then a higher density PUD, sorry, let me get to the pointer, a higher density PUD over here to the east. You also have a little bit of multifamily up here to the north as well. The future land use of the area is RES 6. There's RES 6 throughout the whole entire area. The applicant's request is to go from R1 Rural Residential Zoning District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development zoning to develop 32 single-family detached residential units. Again, the property currently retains its original zoning district of R1 Rural Residential. This is the proposed master plan from the developer currently. You'll see that the park sites had to be split up into two smaller parks just because of the size of the parcel. Against more finding of fact, the site is approximately 9.468 acres of unimproved land. 7.93% is uplands, and 1.52% is wetlands. The applicant is again proposing 4.03 dwelling units per developable acre for 32 single-family dwelling units. The access, let me go back a slide just to show you the access. The access is, the access is off of Alpine Road here, and I believe there will be a turn lane off of Bell Lake Road turning into Alpine Road. This is again kind of what I've covered already, the surrounding districts and land use and the existing uses surrounding it. It's located in the central market area. It is just outside the boundary of the urban service area, and the proposed request is consistent with the Pasco County LDC, Chapter 400, subsection 402 zoning amendment, MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, and with the applicable provisions of the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, and PDD recommends approval to the BCC of the rezoning request with conditions.
Okay.
Have any questions for me?
Any questions up here?
Not so far.
All right. All right, is the applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Board members, Todd Pressman, 200 Second Avenue South in St. Petersburg, Florida, here representing this application today. We work closely with your staff. I think they've, excuse me, given you a very good report. We've submitted all the transportation analysis, which result has been very positive. We have sent out, or I have sent out, 90 notices plus to neighbors. I did receive a few calls. I responded to all those. All those folks seem to be well answered. And as your staff indicates, they support it in their review, comp plan supports it, excuse me, the comp plan supports it. Couple of policies which I think are important is policy or objective HSG 1.1, which asks or directs sufficient densities to achieve a variety of different housing types and to ensure that there's a good variety of housing stock, and that falls under policy, our policy HSG 1.1.3 to encourage residential infill in urban areas. So per your staff report, the transportation report, the notes we've sent out, we believe this is a very good request. It'll be a very nice little subdivision addition to Pasco County. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, do we have any questions at this time, or want to reserve?
Reserve for. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, I think we have some people here with questions, so if you want to come forward, state your name and address, and your concern.
I think you have most of that on the screen. I'm Troy Gacho. I live to the north side of that parcel. I own a little over two acres there.
Okay.
And this is, well, I'll let you introduce yourself.
I'm Dave Hodereen, and I live adjacent, just to the north side of the property, and I have 2 and 1/4 acres.
Okay, because we're keeping a record of what's being said and who's saying it, if you're going to change speakers, I need you to say who you are so that.
Okay, then I'll finish first.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so.
We need your addresses as well.
Okay, I'm at 22434 Ladera Lane, which is the lane right to the north.
Okay, and we'll get yours when you speak.
Okay. So we're opposing the change of zoning to this MPUD, and the main concern is the size of the lots. They're proposing 35-foot wide lots. Everything around this area is R1 RES 6. Most of the lots are at least a half acre in size. This is going to change completely what is on four sides of that. Even the development Lake Paget on the other side of Bell Lake on the south side, the lots are quarter to half acre in size. Regardless of whether RES 6 allows more density, it's not there. And the development further to the west, those lots are much wider than 35 feet as well. We're concerned about drainage in the area and just the look and feel changing drastically from the rural area that we've lived in for the last 20 years.
Okay. Any questions?
One more thing I'd like to mention, their plan shows they have a wetland mitigation pond of some sort just to the west of the wetlands, and that is very close to where my well is as well, so I'd be concerned about what they're going to end up putting in there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Dave Hodereen, and I'm at 22418 Ladera Lane.
Okay.
On the north side of the adjacent property there. To add to what Troy's already told you guys, we researched the development company also that's going to develop the property, and the majority of their communities that they've put into Florida are rental homes. They don't sell the homes, they rent them. Really concerned about bringing rental properties right next to my home. Our home values, we're really worried about those. My house is at at least a half a million dollars right now. I'm sure some of these homes are not going to be close to that with the size of the home that's going in there and the size of their lots. So really worried about the future value of our homes and what's going on there. What else do we have? And then just to add to Troy, the property, I mean, the traffic going up and down Alpine Road. Alpine Road, you almost have to, if a large truck's coming down the road, you almost have to pull over to kind of give them room. It's a very small road. We have ditches on either side, and stacking, you know, pulling out onto Bell Lake Road from Alpine, there's a lot of traffic going up Bell Lake Road, coming through from Collier, and just being able to get out onto the main roads is going to be tougher for us, so we're worried about that also.
Alpine, is that a paved road, or?
It is paved, yes.
And Bell Lake, of course, is.
Yeah.
Okay, two-lane roads.
Mm-hmm. They're small country roads, basically.
Anything else? Any questions from up here?
Just a statement on the road issue. I'd like to call Planning Commission's attention to condition nine, the second part, the applicant's required to improve Alpine Road to county standards from Bell Lake to the project driveway. So to the extent it's a substandard width, they're going to be required to improve it.
Okay. Are you aware of that? Okay. All right. We have the applicant back up to respond to those questions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to show some elevations of the proposed product, if I may. I think there's several here. If I, you want to try them over there, or just pass them through, Denise?
Whatever.
May I pass these to the board members? These are some of the elevations of the proposed product. I'll start two on this side. Start two on this side.
You, you want them back?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Second.
Your motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
So as indicated, the comp plan at this location, in fact, the whole area is six units breaker. Per what staffs communicate to you, we're coming in at about four units per acre, but that's the minimum. What's the target for this site, actually, at this point, would be, the target is 27 homes, 40-foot lots by 110. So again, what's proposed is absolute minimum. We don't think we're going to come in at that point.
You mean to say maximum instead of minimum?
The minimum size lots.
What do you mean, the minimum size lots?
35.
It's 32 units being approved. Are you saying that's the maximum that you'll build?
Maximum is the 32, correct.
You said minimum, that's why you're praising me.
I apologize. Let me rephrase.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. The maximum number of units is 32. The target at the moment, as we're looking closer, is 27. The minimum lot size is 35 foot wide. The target right now is 40. So there is going to be adjustment here. In regard to densities permitted or speed limit in terms of density, six units per acre will be far below that. Per the target, will even be below the four units per acre. But again, as the comp plan indicates, under a number of policies and objectives, it's important to have various housing stock. This would come close or be part of workforce housing, not affordable housing, but a workforce housing, which is a type of housing all the counties are looking at. So in that regard, we feel it's valid and credible, and it's consistent, but most importantly, looking at the plan, you'll see that this, of course, would be a segmented or separate subdivision separated from the others, but to the north of which the gentleman are at is all buffering. There's no homes placed to that side. There's a pond, flood plain mitigation area, and existing category three wetlands, so there'll be a great distance from that property line, and then also you'll note to the west is the same thing, pond, a couple of ponds. So this would be a very compact subdivision, extremely well buffered, particularly from concerns raised from the gentleman to the north. I'll just emphasize again, Mr. Chairman, that we did send out over 90 notices. I think just having two gentlemen here, I think, is a great response. Appreciate their comments, respect their comments, and I'll leave it at that. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Pressman, would you want to address the rental concern one of the gentleman brought up?
The company does do a lot of rental housing. That certainly is the case. That is a type of housing stock that is well-needed. These are higher-priced, these are higher-priced homes. These are not small and expensive homes. As you can see, they're a very beautiful product. It's designed for families. It's not apartments or things of that nature. These are very nice, single-family homes, so it is a much higher stock in that category.
So what do you see as your average rental rate there?
Rental rate?
How much are they going to rent for?
I don't have an answer to that. I do have what would be a typical price point, but I don't have a rental rate. I don't know what that is.
What is your typical price point?
Make sure I have that correct for you. The market value of the homes proposed have a range from 259,000 to 345,000 per the developer.
Okay. So he plans to sell some of those and rent some of them, is that what you're saying?
To best of my knowledge, the emphasis is on renting. Purchasing, of course, is always an option as well.
Mr. Chair, I just want to be clear, the county doesn't really regulate, even if you were to sell these homes, we don't regulate somebody's in renting out once they buy it.
Right.
Unless it becomes a short-term rental and it triggers our short-term rental ordinance, but otherwise, if it's a long-term rental situation, the county doesn't do anything to stop somebody from buying and then renting it out, so I'm sure it really matters whether it's rental or purchase.
Right.
Because we don't stop somebody from renting it.
I'm really asking that for the benefit of the neighbors.
No, I, I just, I just didn't want them to also think that we somehow regulate rental versus purchase.
Right, exactly. Okay. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, well, what's the square footage of the homes? You gave us five pages. You gave us five different views of the homes. Some of them look very small, some look very large. Is that the product that's going to go in this area, or are those are anticipated photos that you wanted to show us? What's the end product going to look like that's going to go into those homes? And of course, I want to know the square footage of the homes, too.
I have two floor plans I can show you. These are two floor plans of the proposed units. I don't have the exact square footage. I'd have to add it up, but I'd be happy to give you these floor plans if you'd like, sir.
Not really.
I'd be happy to put.
I'm concerned about the square footage of the homes.
I'd be happy to put these in the record for the other members or for yourself as well, if I may.
So you don't know the answer to how the size are going to be? I mean, are they 1,500, 2,000, 3,000 square? I mean, what are we talking about, house size?
My understanding is the mid 2000s. I can look through my notes quickly, but that's my general understanding. Yes, sir.
Similar to the question that I asked about rental rates and how many would be rented, the size of the homes is not something we can control, but we can control lot size. We can't control the size of the home, but I think the questions are being asked for the benefit of the people who are going to live.
Yes, sir.
Next door. Anybody have any?
I need to receive this in file.
Is that part of the prior?
No, it's different.
No, it's different.
Did you need a motion?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
I mean, I've got a concern, too, with the lot size in and of itself. I mean, the way that this is brought before is they're 35-foot wide lots, and everything out there, the minimum I see around there is 80-foot wide lots. Existing zonings are one. I know we're changing the zoning, so we're here, but I just, I have a problem with these small lots myself.
Well, and to the, yeah, to the west, they're half-acre lots. Even to the south, they're close to 0.3 acres.
So if I can, Terry, do you have any thoughts or comments you'd like to share with us about that? Terms of compatibility and so forth.
Excuse me, Nictarius Pito's Planning and Development. You referring to with regard to the lot sizes themselves?
Yeah, just how you feel about it. Are you comfortable with it, basically?
Well, what I can say is that the residential flu, or the future land use is a residential future land use of RES 6, and typically the densities are going to relate specifically to the flu, so the lot dimensions that are going to be designed are going to meet that future land use density limit. So here it's six dwelling units per gross acre. To fit six dwelling units per gross acre, they've come in with a lot width that's, I believe it was 35 feet wide. So it meets the density requirement. So, it meets the density requirement in that regard.
Okay.
You know, there's an interplay here with regard to how wide lot sizes can be and how big other facilities need to be on the site in order to accommodate things like the stormwater infrastructure, for example, and the road network. So, those play into how the development's going to shape out.
All right.
Now, that being said, there's, nobody's entitled to the maximum that the future land use allows, and this is zoning, so.
Right.
If you think there's a zoning compatibility issue, you don't have to allow the maximum that the future land use allows.
Would we then suggest a different maximum, or would we just deny it?
Well, you can do either, to be honest. I mean, if you don't think it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, you could deny it, or you could recommend approval subject to them having a different lot size or a different minimum width size, or different minimum lot size.
I just also want to make a point of clarification to the Planning Commission that the land use is Res 6, which is the potential for six dwelling units per gross acre, but this development altogether is coming in at four dwelling units per acre. If you look at it from a.
What does R1 allow?
R1 is 20,000 square foot lots, so 2.2 per acre.
So, it is higher than what R1 allows?
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions from up here? Thank you, Terry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
So, just in summary, your planning staff has come forward very positively. We've sent out, again, over 90 notices. The community, at great majority, is not in opposition. Transportation is fine. And again, the comprehensive plan does note separate housing stocks and different types of housing stocks. The subdivision will be separate, distinct from these other gentlemen who have concerns. We appreciate your consideration. However we may be able to move forward with the board, we'd be happy to, thank you.
Let me ask one more question.
Yes, sir.
I didn't pick up on it. And what kind of buffer do you propose for this project? Do you have a buffer proposed for this project?
Well, there's a built-in buffer, there's a considerable buffer built into the north, almost the north, 1/3 of the property is all buffer.
Where the pond is, the wetlands.
The wetlands, floodplain mitigation, and the ponds, that literally by my eye is 1/3 of the whole north part of the subdivision. That's a tremendous buffer, plus those are whatever buffers on the other side. So, in terms of consistency element, that's a tremendous expanse between the two. You'll also have some to the west, and of course, you have Alpine Road to the east. I'd also note that this subdivision also proposed right on Bell Lake Road, which is a busier road, there's impacts there, and this would provide a good buffer as well on noise to the subdivision to the north.
If you're not really answering the chair's question, maybe staff can answer it. What is the required buffer on their boundaries, the end of the Land Development Code?
I can answer.
Okay.
So, single-family residential to single-family residential does not require a buffer, but they're proposing ponds adjacent to their property boundary. And whenever there's a pond adjacent to, in an adjacent parcel, there's required to have trees 60 feet on center. But the Land Development Code does not require any kind of visual screen other than the trees next to the pond.
What about against the roadway, Alpine and Bell Lake?
The road does require to have a buffer.
What is that buffer?
It's a D or B, I believe it's a D.
Could you explain that in layman's terms, what a B is?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. So, the required buffer will be a 15-foot-wide buffer, I believe. There'll be trees 60 feet on center, there'll be landscaping around the trees, and I believe there will probably be a proposed wall, but I'm not sure if one's required for a D.
Okay. What about to the west? I don't have, I lost my screen here.
Yeah. So, to the west is, again, single-family residential. So, single-family residential to single-family residential does not require. If you're talking about Alpine, which is to the east, that is not a collector or ulterior roadway, so it looks across the street. And across the street is single-family residential as well, so no buffer would be required, and that is.
In reality, the only real buffer will be against Bell Lake Road.
That is correct.
There's no, there's no issues with, relative to the security on the ponds for, in other words, like you have with a pool or anything like that?
No, I mean, they'll be graded appropriately, so I wouldn't see that being an issue, and the technical team, I believe, is here, who could speak to that, if you'd like to talk to them about that.
You understand my question, as far as?
Yeah, I believe I do.
In the neighborhood and?
Sure. I don't think there's any restrictions when it comes to ponds. Again, I think it's a slope issue, and maybe the technical team. I'm sorry, I thought the technical team was here. Yeah, I understand the.
You're the technical.
Yeah, I know. I understand the concern. I don't think there's any restrictions. I think when there are ponds adjacent to rights of way, there might be some screening required, and I think if, I think the slope is too steep, it might require fencing. I believe that's the appropriate answer.
Generally, if you're over 4 to 1, you're required to have a fence, but 4 to 1 slopes on a pond, you're not.
Thank you.
He's the expert.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, is your concern mostly buffering to the north, or what was the source of the question?
Mostly buffering to the north, yeah.
Well, let me just ask staff, the part that says existing category-three wetland, is that a tree, I'm assuming it's a tree wetland?
Not pond.
I mean, is it?
We'll move back to the location map, maybe the location map will be able to better show us.
I press for the record, I gave Denise an aerial, a Google aerial.
Probably the same.
Yeah. So, it's, it's a little hard to see, and I don't believe we have that view of the property. But again, it's single-family to single-family, so that's not really something that we considered when it came to buffering of the site.
Yeah, it looks more like a cyber spawn or something, yeah. Okay.
But I want to be clear, Mr. Chair, if the buffering to the north is a concern for you, Planning Commission has authority to require additional buffering on the north side that exceeds our code. I mean, this isn't MPUD, so you have that, that's within your authority.
Mr. Pressley, I got one more question. You've hit on a couple of times that, the intent, I think what I heard you say was the intent of MPUD per the comp plan is to provide a variety of housing types. Is that what you said? And have a stock of a variety of housing types available?
I was referring to a couple or a number of comp plan policies, yes, sir.
Okay. What, from what I've heard you say, you're talking about 2,000-square-foot houses in the price range, or price point between $250,000 and $350,000. Is that right?
The price point is, that number is confirmed by the developer. I'm trying to get a confirmation on the square footage. That's the best, as I understand it. I don't know how factual that is, I'm trying to get an answer for you right now on that.
I guess where I'm going with that is that seems like, that's a lot of the similar characteristics to what every other development is going up and down 54. I mean, I realize it's smaller lot types, but I think the smaller lot types are the point of contention. I mean, when I hear variety of product types, I would think, okay, single-family houses versus townhomes, or something like that, but I don't, I don't know how this provides a variety of housing types, personally. It's just my.
If I may, the comp, one, part of the comp plan policy is referred to infill, for residential infill development of vacant lands, policy HSG 1.1.3. Where there's water and sewer lines, they will be connected to water in the sewer. HSG 2.1 is affordability, that provide opportunities for workforce housing, which this would be. Goal HSG 1, to ensure opportunities of adequate supply of all housing types in appropriate locations for all Pasco County residents. Designation of sufficient densities to achieve a variety of housing types. So, when I, I always look through the comp plan for issues I'm working with, and I would, with great respect, indicate to you that the comp plan does want quite a variety of different types of housing. This does meet workforce housing, and its distancing and buffering from the other subdivision is more than significant. I appreciate your.
I hear you saying that, I just, I don't know why, I mean, why is this different than the other product, than the other products that are being built up and down 54? How is this different? It's single-family housing, it's 2,000 square feet, it's $300,000. I mean, that sounds like what they're building in every community.
I would also say, sir, with great respect, that the elevations and product proposed is very nice and very professional, is family-oriented. It would be a very quiet, very nice little subdivision for starter families and workforce families.
What's your definition of workforce, please?
Workforce is typically police, fire, county workers, city-county workers, that level of type of workforce.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I have a question, staff. The PUD that is directly south across Bell Lake Road, what's the density there?
I don't have that information, the specific density, I don't have that information. The future land use there is Res 6, but I know that's not answering the question you're looking to have answered.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to look at compatibility, and as I look at these other developed subdivisions around, we have MPUDs, the PUD, so that's probably a fairly old housing stock if it's PUD, right, David?
PUDs are older, typically older developments, yes.
And then there's Res 2, to, I guess it would be the east, this yacht club terrace, I'm assuming that's.
R2, yes. Those are 9,500 square foot lots typically.
95?
Mm-hmm. So, you have 4.6 dwelling units per acre on R2s.
4.6.
Mm-hmm.
What's the minimum lot width?
Minimum lot width on R2 is 80-foot wide lots.
Just by looking at this map, I mean, this, the PUD to the, to the south, this Kingsley Lane and all that, they're, they're obviously larger parcels.
Yeah, those are the ones that like, 1/3 of an acre.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I mean, I have a reservation of a level of density for this project. I think I'm a bit too dense for the surrounding area.
All right. Does anyone have a proposal?
I would make the motion that we deny this request. I have concerns about the lot sizes, the density. I question whether or not it's, if it's actually going to enhance that particular part of Pasco County, and Lake area. I don't know if those are concerns, those are concerns I have. I don't know if I, how I would put that into a motion to deny it, but those are all my concerns. And I have to say, I still have a question mark out here about the rental stuff. I know we, we can't control that, but if I was an investor for 200K, I can go ahead and buy one of his homes and then rent it. And I think I've seen that happen in other communities in this area and in other places that I lived, and people have done that. And I would, if I had the funds, I would certainly consider that also. But that's how I feel about it.
Well, I think if you're inclined to deny it, you can base that solely on compatibility. You don't have to get into the issue of where they are or not renting it. In fact, I would caution you to not base your decision on that.
I know that. And I wanted to make it clear that, that I don't have a concern. If somebody wants to buy and rent, that's fine. I've done that in the past, and there's nothing improper about that, so I don't want that to be confused as why it's in the back of my mind.
It looks like somebody, Denise, has put up some of the zoning criteria. If you're making the motion, you might want to cite the ones that you.
So, we can make a motion to deny, or we can make a, make a suggestion for less dense.
You can do that, too, that's your.
Okay.
Both of those things are possible.
Okay.
Funny enough, my computer's shutting down. It always has a shutdown while we're in the middle of a planning commission meeting, so I apologize. It was set for shutdown.
Okay. If you're going to deny it, we can probably cite the appropriate, if it's based on compatibility, we can pick out the criteria that it would, that relate to compatibility. Well, because you were, you were trying to say it was inconsistent with the comp plan, without citing the comp plan.
You always pull up those details, David.
That's why we've got him.
That's different than saying it's incompatible from a zoning perspective.
Is Mr. Hansel making a motion?
Yeah, that's his motion, right?
That's my motion.
Yeah, I'll second it, I have the same concerns with the compatibility with the surrounding zoning and the surrounding uses of the land.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
The only thing I want to say, Mr. Chair, one of the issues with just trying to reduce the density is that, I'm not sure their plan works at a reduced density, because they have neighbor parks that are based on the density that are in there, is in there, and so if you reduce the density, it may not even trigger the neighbor park, or they'd have to redo their plan anyway, so I'm not sure.
That would help.
It would be difficult to approve this plan at a reduced density. Is that making sense?
Probably couldn't commit to it, yeah.
Because I don't know that, they'd probably have to redo the plan.
Okay. All right, so, so we do have a motion, we have a second for the discussion. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Close? Motion carries.
Appreciate your attention, heard your comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Yeah. On favor?
Aye.
Okay.